The microphones are on, the cameras are rolling, and good evening to all of you, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. We kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Alderman Brown?
Here.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simonian?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
We always begin our city council meetings with a pledge of allegiance, and I see we have some distinguished young men in the audience this evening. You guys represent which troupe?
Troop 37.
Troop 37. Would you be the honors of leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
That's your troupe, isn't it, Lynn?
Oh, boy, I gotta reference that again?
Yeah.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Did you guys choose those rows in the back so you're not on TV, or what? Well, now you're gonna be on TV, because our director probably there is singling you out. Tonight's a big night. Our first guest of honor, State Representative-elect Mr. Steve Anderson. Mr. Anderson, welcome.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
It's wonderful to have an opportunity to speak before you. I come to you, really, just to introduce and open the dialogue. I know virtually all of you from a variety of different roles, whether that be volunteering on one of your committees, being on the library board right next door for a number of years, being a precinct committeeman, and, of course, being the attorney for Metro West Council of Government. My day job, of course, many of you know, maybe not all, that I'm a local village attorney for quite a number of different communities in the area, and I have spent my life in local government, quite literally, my adult life, not my childhood, my adult life. And so now I have the opportunity to serve this community in a different role, and that's why I'm here. It's the opportunity to serve all of you, or, well, I guess I represent a portion of the city, but I honestly believe I represent every last piece of it, and that is as your incoming state rep for the 65th district. So that district runs from the river west to Randall Road, and then it runs north, well, it starts in Batavia, and it runs north all the way into McHenry County and the city of Huntley. So I have a large area to cover. It's about 108,000 people that I have the honor to represent, but this is my home. And so this is where I wanted to start making these introductions and to open that dialogue. The things that I want you to be aware of, that I am concerned about, are the things that are about local control. As I said, my life has always been about local government, and I believe that you all actually are the most accountable to the citizens. You're the most directly answerable, accountable, and reachable typically. It's a little harder to get in touch with people as they go up the chain, so to speak. So you being the most accountable, the most accessible, the most reachable, in my opinion, you have the biggest responsibility, and it's my job to help you do that. So how am I gonna do that? A number of different ways. Number one, I'm going to try to convince the members down in Springfield to act as you do. In other words, to be responsible about their budgets first and foremost. But the other thing I'm going to ask, cajole, convince, any way I can, is to have them lay off of you. In other words, no more unfunded mandates, and where we find them, try to retract them, to protect the local government distributive fund, which, of course, is key to what you do. These are gonna be big issues as we come forward into this next budget cycle. LGDF has always been a target, and to date, it's largely been defended, but I intend to defend it again, because I think it'll be on the radar screen of the powers that be down in Springfield. So we're gonna try to do all of that. But in order to do that, I do wanna ask you for a couple of favors. Number one, keep this dialogue open. In other words, tell me your needs, tell me your concerns. I can't act on your behalf and in your best interest if I don't have that communication. Number two is, of course, keep me accountable. In other words, if you see me doing something inconsistent with what I just said, hold me to it, and I look forward to that, because if I've done that, either I've lost my mind or there's a good reason, and if there's a good reason, I'll tell you what it is. And if I've lost my mind, then you need somebody else on that. So I will be opening my new offices, and they will be here in Geneva, I'm proud to say, but I can't tell you where yet, because we don't have the lease quite locked down. But I look forward to the dialogue. I'm happy to answer any questions tonight or any time else. I look forward to a continuing relationship, but mostly just, again, thank you for your support and looking forward to the new adventure.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions for Representative-elect Anderson? Alderman Brown?
Thank you. Well, first, congratulations.
Thank you.
And second, it would seem to me that the Western Mayors is a more powerful voice in a lot of ways. Is there such a thing as the Western Mayor's Caucus, and could you form one?
You mean down in Springfield itself?
Yes.
There are a number of mayors who have gone on to become state representatives or state senators. Mike Fortner is a good example of that from West Chicago. Ron Sandak also, and I think Ron actually helps out with your role, Chuck, periodically, is another example of that from Downers Grove. I am told that there is an informal caucus. Mostly what it means is when they pass each other in the hall, they don't call each other state rep, they call each other mayor. So there is a connection there.
I meant more just a caucus of the people who represent the Western Mayor's Association.
You mean Metro West?
Yeah, Metro West, I'm sorry, Metro West. Because that is a more powerful bloating block in some real sense. What is the constituency of Metro West in population?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Seven hundred and fifty, so it seemed to me that that's, in some sense, the kernel of a caucus.
I see what you're saying, that getting those state reps and state senators who have that common interest together. It's a very good point.
Thank you.
Alderman Maladra, then Alderman.
So Steve, since you mentioned local control, what have you heard about the legislation being bandied about in Springfield? I call it Home Rule Light, and I don't know what the technical name is.
It's called...
MM something.
Yeah, it's the Municipal Authority Modernization Act. I had a little something to do with that as well. And right now, Metro West is in the process of retooling that based on comments that they received when they brought it down to Springfield last session. I remain optimistic that that's gonna move forward, although the exact form of it, right now, is being reviewed by the Metro West Council of Government, by their legislative committee, and then ultimately by their governing board as well. I think you'll see some changes in the exact nature of it, but the spirit of it, which is the idea that we want to give those communities between 5,000 and 25,000, 25,000, of course, when you hit home rule and you get unlimited power. Those communities in that span, if you will, the growing communities, deserve something more than simply the stated powers in the Illinois Municipal Code. Instead, we expand that so you can grow, experiment, and learn, if you will, before suddenly at 25,000 you have all the powers that you want, and you've never had a chance to experiment with anything but the base powers that the municipal code gives you. So I think it's gonna move forward. Exactly what form, we'll see.
Great, thanks.
You bet.
Alderman Kilburg?
Just one subject, especially as I prepare for the meeting this evening, I was looking at our sales tax revenue here in Geneva.
Sure.
And we continue to struggle to make budget, and again, those budgets were pretty much flat compared to what last year's actuals were.
Right.
You know, I just would encourage you, as our representative, to look at expanding the sales tax base, to look at consumer services versus just goods. And the dynamics of business and the emergence of e-commerce, not only in Illinois but across the United States, is having a dramatic impact on sales tax revenues. And as our representative, if you could speak on our behalf, this area has to be explored and some equity brought back into that tax, that portion of taxation as it relates to Illinois, it'd be appreciated.
I appreciate that. Governor-elect Roner has already made that a portion of his campaign platform, so I am certain that there will be a dialogue about that. Right now, I think we tax about 12 service-based industries, and I think there are upwards of 270 that could theoretically be taxed, so there's certainly room for expansion. I think that's a dialogue that's definitely going to happen in the budget process for the state, which would reflect naturally down to you.
Alderman Singer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, I think I know the answer to this question. Will you have an opportunity to select the committees you'd like to serve on?
I will. I will have the opportunity not to select them, but to request which ones I serve on.
Request.
Now...
And what are you looking for?
Well, I'm looking at two predominantly. One, I would sacrifice everything else to be on, and you can probably guess which one that is, local government, cities and villages is what they call it. That's my skill set, and so I believe when you go into a new role, you bring your skills with you, and that is where I have the most knowledge. In fact, right now, I serve on Governor-elect Roner's transition team for local government and local government efficiencies. We'll be meeting in Chicago tomorrow, where I'll be bringing some of these ideas, including Home Rule Light has been brought up to the governor's attention. So that's my main focus, but then also I would very much like to be on one of the five appropriations committees that dictates how finances are done at the state level. I'm actually a little disappointed that there are five. There, in my mind, should be one with subcommittees, because right now, there is no one who holds the keys, except, well, there is one gentleman who holds the keys down in Springfield in the House of Representatives to all of the appropriations. They divide it up before any committee ever sees it. I think that that engenders a silo mentality for how they decide how to spend money in Springfield, where one silo really doesn't know what another is doing. That's something I'd like to see changed. But regardless, I need to be on one of them to be able to make some noise in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanna wish you the best and keep, make sure you have us not, focus on the unfunded mandates.
Absolutely.
Especially, because I think that that really has crippled a lot of municipalities.
Absolutely. I'd like to look at it two ways, both prospective and in retrospect. For the ones that are already there, I think, and I've urged Governor-elect Roner on this topic, is to look back at them and see which ones we could possibly remove or suspend. And going forward, a suggestion that I had, and this is something that the governor could do, is he could make an announcement early on saying, "I won't, I will veto, I won't approve any bill that doesn't have, number one, a fiscal note explaining what the impact is to local government, and, number two, if there is an impact to it, I won't sign it unless there's either a supermajority or near consensus of the whole House and Senate to impose it." In other words, force the House and the Senate to really make a conscious effort that if they're gonna do it, everybody knows it. And if then, if they decide to do it that way, then, well, we'll hold them accountable. But I think that that will reduce the number of unfunded mandates, because like all things, when you shine a light on it, tends to...
And usually, when they put something in place, it never goes away, so it's much better to revisit all of those.
I agree. Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? We have constituents joining us this evening as well, of course. Troop 37, this is your next state representative, Mr. Anderson with two S's. Colin, what do you think, man?
I take that as a good exit.
Lifetime appointment of victory, man, that's awesome. As most of you know, state representatives have two offices. It's Governor Roner right now, hold on. That was my alma mater calling for money. Sorry about that. Mr. Anderson will have a office in Springfield, Illinois, and one here in Geneva.
Correct.
And it's not unusual for representatives and senators and elected officials at every level to ask their respective communities to help populate those offices with, if not tchotchkes, perhaps something that reminds you of home.
Absolutely.
We have a special gift on behalf of the council and the community to populate both your Springfield office and, of course, your office here in Geneva. If I may present those to you.
Absolutely.
It's actually a picture of the council.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Something for the dartboard.
Just three short years ago, as all of you will recall, we celebrated 100 years here at City Hall. This is a commemorative poster for you to display proudly, both in Springfield and, of course, here in Geneva, so...
Beautiful. And it proudly says Geneva, Illinois, right on there, which is what I want people to be able to see when they come down and visit, that these are my communities.
So those are for you?
Excellent. Thank you so much.
And when all of us come to visit, we expect to see those displayed.
It will be hanging loud and proud, so to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
And those do fall under the $75 gift ban act. That shouldn't be a problem. Yeah, give one back, would you mind?
You have to give me once a month.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Item B, ladies and gentlemen, is the presentation of the 2014 Strategic Planning Goals Session Report. Our guest, Patty Gentrup from Novak Consulting, is with us. Patty, welcome back.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to be here.
And Patty, I'm not certain if your microphone's on or not. If you want a button there to press, the red light... It's all good, okay, forgive me.
It's all good.
It's on.
Okay.
It's on, it's my fault.
You're ready to go.
Mic, the lights? Oh, you know what? I think I have those mics, sorry about that.
Takes a team, huh? Well, it was November 7th that I was last with you, and we gathered together for most of a day. I think it was from about 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the afternoon to come together to talk about the future of Geneva. That discussion was not new to you. I think I'd like to commend you for coming together on a regular basis to do strategic planning, looking not just ahead to the next year, but beyond that, and I think you did a great job of that again on November 7th. So the outcomes for the 7th were kind of threefold. First of all, you wanted to do a review of the strategic plan, take a look at the visions and the goals within the plan, although not word for word. It's my understanding that had been done previously, and so, given that you have a lot of experience in reviewing the plan, we didn't do it word for word, but had a general overview. Then, the most important part, I think, of the day was to really identify the issues that would form your work plan for the next budget year. And then also, you spent some time strengthening the relationships among yourselves and with the staff. Tonight, I'm really just gonna focus primarily on that strategic planning portion of the day. And as I just mentioned, you looked at the seven visions, and you said, yes, these are the things that if we're going to advance our community, these are the areas in which we need to be focusing our efforts. You spent a little bit of time identifying what new initiatives there might be, and then you prioritized those initiatives. So the job before me as a facilitator, and really, I think as a facilitator, is my goal just to help you with those discussions, was either more difficult or easier because of your experience with strategic planning. I'm still not sure which it is. It was just in April of this year that you adopted your most recent strategic plan, and that wasn't done in just one evening, that was done after months-long review with your Strategic Planning Advisory Committee. And within that plan, you have seven visions and 97 discrete goals. So it's no wonder that you kind of decided 97 was maybe just a little too many to tackle at one time. So just really, really quickly, in terms of what those visions are, there are very specific categories. The first one really is recognizing what a wonderful history you have here in Geneva, and so recognizing that you want to honor that heritage and that culture. The second goal really said, let's take a look at all of our business districts and corridors, not just the great downtown, but where we're developing all over, and make sure that they're vibrant. You also want to make sure that you have a community that is involved, and I think just one great example is your Strategic Planning Advisory Committee. You want to make sure you're unified and that you're good stewards of the financial resources. You want to make sure that you're environmentally sound and that you have a strong multimodal transportation system. So those are generally what the seven visions are. You had just received, the week before I came, a quarterly report explaining kind of the progress, not just what the visions were, but the goals that you had been working on, the progress that had been made towards this. It was really, our conversation that day focused not necessarily on specific items, but a real recognition that it was going to take, in some instances, you could achieve those goals in a short amount of time, but there are a lot of those issues that are going to take not just one year, maybe not just two years, but an extended amount of time. And I think even as you'll see how I've defined short term, it doesn't necessarily mean something can be accomplished in a short timeframe, but you want to begin that work. You also had a lot of discussion related to being flexible, understanding that the strategic plan is a guide and that you want to be able to review it on a regular basis, which is something that you do. I would encourage you to continue reviewing that, and if there are opportunities, you recognize that you wanted to be able to raise those to your colleagues and have a full discussion of their governing body to decide how that might, whether that affects your strategic plan. So, you know, what did we do? After we had pretty full discussion of those particular issues, we also asked, were there any new ideas that needed to come to the fore? And there were a few new ideas that were raised, but I would tell you, none of those, after you did your prioritization, none of those were raised to a level of, this is something that we've got to do immediately. You were giving us, given a series of dots. A pink dot was for something that you thought was the most important, green dots were for something that you wanted to begin on immediately, and yellow dots were considered something that was important but long-term. Now, as you know, this just helps give us, is an exercise to help give us some objectivity to very subjective discussions. So the first, there are, I believe that there were seven goals that you identified as being issues that you wanted to make sure that you start or continue working on in the next budget year. As a matter of fact, these first three goals that are listed on this slide are issues that you've already taken up, that you're already working on, and I would suggest to you that that's just fine, that they remain on the list, because they are all longer term, and you've got to continue with them. And I might say, I'm gonna go ahead and go through the process. If you've got questions regarding specific goals, I will, of course, defer those to the staff. So the second slide, again, these are short-term goals, but they are all within the overall vision of managing the city resources. First of all, you want to look at underused property within the city, and I would imagine that's, you know, how can you make that fully developed? How can you get more sales tax revenue and provide more services to your city? You also want to develop the infrastructure on the southeast industrial park and continue to look at capital funding over the next 24 months. Again, that's something that I don't know was a specific goal in this year's budget document, but you've made a lot of progress on it, and I think that's something that you want to continue as well. Facilitate, encourage, and provoke environmental awareness. This was actually a new, a new item, I guess, that did raise to the level of importance. There were a lot of, and we might have to wordsmith a little bit, I don't know if we'd do that this evening, Mary, but address issues with the dam, and there was a lot of different discussion that that's something that's an ongoing issue that you want to address and hopefully begin immediately. In terms of long-term goals, there was only one that rose to a level of a longer-term goal, and when I say longer-term goal, it had many folks who said, we acknowledge this is important, and we want to look forward to it on a longer-term basis. However, again, as you look at the short-term goals, even though you want to work on those immediately, a lot of those are gonna take quite a little while. So what do you do with this? It's my understanding that, as you have in the past, these issues will be used in development of the 2016 budget, that the city administrator will continue to bring these forward to you on a quarterly basis to explain not just progress on these goals, but others that might arise to the occasion. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the process, or defer questions regarding specific goals to Ms. McKittrick.
Questions or comments for Mrs. Gentrup? Anyone from the audience as to what was just presented, and perhaps curiosity as to our processes and process? I'm gonna ask Colin everything. What do you think, Colin? Just say, "Well done," and I'll be good, man.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you, Patty.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much.
I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, I think she covered it very well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item four, ladies and gentlemen, is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this city council and can be considered and enacted by one motion. Motion by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Singer. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Item five passes unanimously. We jump down to item 9A, recommend acceptance of Strategic Plan Goals Session Report from November 7, 2014. Alderman Maladra makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the second. Questions or comments? Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just accepting the report, it's not the plan, correct?
Accepting the report of what happened on the 7th.
The 7th.
Correct.
Okay, and that'll be followed with formal plan.
The actual building of the budget and what have you.
Well, the plan is already in place, so the next thing that this will affect will be the budget coming forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? A voice vote sufficient? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item number 10, municipal bills per payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in aggregate for our consideration this evening.
Bills per payment total $3,392,162.3.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual invoices that add up to that total can be found in the packet for tonight's meeting on the city website.
Second.
Motion offered by Brown to pay the bills as presented, seconded by Alderman Flanagan. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Item 10 passes unanimously. We jump down to item number 13, new business, and we invite those joining us this evening to either share with or ask any questions about anything on your mind. Troop 37, what's up, man? Any questions or comments? Tommy?
What badge do they get, Mr. Mayor, for this?
I think the patience and tolerance badge. This is part of the citizenship badge, I presume?
Give us one of them. Better for that for signature, aren't they?
What grade are you guys in? The enthusiasm's overwhelming. Do you want to say... Alderman Kilburg?
Tommy, I know that you've been involved in a lot of things already as it relates to citizenship already. Maybe you want to tell us a little bit about some of the things you've done the last year to help your community?
Sure, why not?
Tommy, I usually go to bed at 10 o'clock, so please.
I guess I'll hurry.
Pull the mic down right back, Tommy.
All right, well, I've done some stuff, like have it be participated in, like, community activities, fundraisers, also some sort of, like, have it be Eagle projects and stuff, scout projects, just things that people need. I've been doing some fundraising for a couple charities and stuff that might help other citizens in Geneva and stuff like that, and that's pretty much it.
That's it?
That is it.
The heck, man? And what grade are you in, Tommy?
Seventh.